Ready. We'll get going here, start with roll call. Juana.
I'm here.
Neil.
Present.
Kim.
Here.
All right, and Grant is here. Mike Langer and John Mortensen are both on vacation this week, enjoying the nice weather. So they are, excuse absence. Let's officially call the meeting to order and move to the flag salute. You have a flag to put on the screen?
I do. Is the flag visible?
I don't see it.
Shows, is it showing anything?
I see it on my end.
There it is.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. To the republic which stands one nation under God. Okay, this brings us to our first opportunity for public input for items on the agenda. Give it about sixty seconds, please put your name and email in chat. Justin will collect those and we'll call you off in order and what's posted on the screen there shows kind of the our public comment protocol. So by adding your name and email address, we'll be able to pull you up, try to limit your time to three minutes or less. Can read through the rest there. Thank you, thanks for scrolling through the agenda. And Justin, do we have anybody?
No, no one at this time, Grant.
Okay, thank you, there's another opportunity at the end of the meeting. So we will move on to additions, deletions to the agenda. So we have three items to potentially add. One is naming of the Rochester High School walking trail. Five B, unclaimed funds, section four. And the school board meeting schedule, five C, adding an item there. No questions about that? Can I get a motion to approve the additions to the agenda?
This is Juana, all approved, the agenda is presented.
Thank you, I hear second.
This is Neil, I will second.
Thank you, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this is really easy, it was just three of us, pretty easy with five of us too, I guess. Recognize, all right, so we've added the items. Next is the consent agenda, so we've got the minutes from our last meeting, payroll vouchers, the unclaimed funds item, one resignation, some teacher contracts. And false horse contracts. Hopefully they had a chance to look through those, any questions on any of those items? If there aren't questions, I would, I would make the motion to approve the consent agenda. Can I get a second?
This is Neil, shall move.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
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 Okay. That's only three of us, so I won't say opposed. All right, moving to old business, school start updates. Through day two, Kim.
Thank you, yes, very exciting. So at last, our schools are open five days a week. Tomorrow will be our first Friday of having school since March of 2019, is that right, 2019? Yep. And I guess it's not tomorrow, tomorrow's Thursday, this coming Friday will be our first Friday. And so just some snapshots, middle schoolers getting off the bus and some primary and elementary school students. The morning, yesterday, our very first day, kids are excited, staff is excited. The weather has been beautiful, it's really helps us at the beginning of the year to go through all our entrance procedures and, you know, getting on buses takes much longer at the beginning of the year, those types of things are very much improved when we have lovely weather, so it was, it's been a great start for us. I'll get into some more details next. Preliminary enrollment is what I have projected here, and so, and this is incredibly preliminary. I will just draft, it should say draft all over it. And let me walk you through what this represents, the green column is the headcount of students who are actually present today in school, so this is our count of students where we saw the whites of their eyes. And the next column over is how many students per, for that grade level we budgeted. And then the next column is how many students are enrolled in our Skyward system. So, a couple, you know, clearly there's a lot of variation in these numbers. I can talk a little bit about why that is. First of all, the number in our Skyward system, a student stays in our Skyward system until we receive a request for their records that they've withdrawn. So some students may have withdrawn, but we've not yet received a request for their records. We have other students who intend to come to school, have not yet been at school because perhaps they're at home under a quarantine. Or they're still on a summer vacation, or there's a multitude of other, maybe they're just sick enough, you know, have another type of illness. So there's still, you know, some play here. And you'll see for grades six through twelve, that these numbers do not represent students who are currently in our Hart High School or our middle school virtual academy. Our online program, those numbers aren't represented here. And there's also a lot of fluctuation in our secondary numbers, particularly in eleventh and twelfth grade. As they have not yet started their community college program, so students are in running start. So the, the portion of an FTE that they are currently represent and still needs to get ironed out, so if they're taking three classes at the college and one class at the high school, those types of things, there's a lot of massaging that still happens as students are changing their course schedules. So again, very preliminary, if this were accurate, we would be one hundred and sixteen students under budget currently. But we also have not fully staffed for all the students that we had in our original budget. Kindergarten would be a prime example of that. Questions that you have about the preliminary enrollment numbers?
Just maybe one that stands out to me is the ninth grade.
Yes.
Seems quite high based on the budgeted FTE.
Yep, twenty students over there, and there's a place where we're about thirteen students higher than we anticipated. Oh, first grade.
First grade, okay. At this point, it's just too early to make.
It is, yeah. I don't get too worried about these numbers right now.
Yeah.
It's generally a good week in, at least for K through eight. And then a little bit longer until our community colleges start up before we have solid numbers in eleven and twelve.
Yeah, if I remember right, we had around, it was just under seventy, sixty-eight or so kids that were participating in running start last year. Can't remember if it was full timer, but that's a good chunk of kids.
Yep.
At the next next meeting, will we have, we expect to have more accurate numbers, but we would also have comparisons to last year and twenty nineteen, twenty, because we can kind of see if there's a trend.
Yes, we can definitely, we'll have those enrollment reports. The official first day of enrollment for count purposes for numbers that get reported to the state happen on Friday, so it's always the fourth day of school of the school year is the official count day. And we did receive word that students who are not able to attend school on count day because of quarantine will still be counted. So we'll be able to get a portionment for them as long as we're providing an outreach to them around some things that they can be doing in terms of schoolwork during their absence. Other questions?
Yeah, this is Neil, Kim. When will we have information and numbers on the virtual academy, do we have any idea how many kids signed up to do that?
It looks like Justin might have some information there, thanks, Justin.
Yep, so Neil, at this, at this point in time, we have five middle school students that have signed up for the virtual academy. And the high school is moving through and looking at, I think there's, there's three, the high school's looking at, they're still going back and forth with parents and students of whether or not that's the, the, the best route of, of education where maybe heart, the traditional heart may be better for those particular students than the virtual academy part, maybe trying to make sure we set kids up for the most possible success. But middle school students at this point in time, we have five.
Thank you.
You, Justin? Any other questions on this slide? All right, so we have open positions in the district, so I want to bring you up to speed, some of these are Rochester School District positions, some are contractor positions. And my first one on the list was on my list until about five minutes ago when I received a text that we hired an additional kindergarten teacher. So that will get those class sizes down to a nice manageable number. And next on the list is athletic director, so in the consent agenda, you approved resignation of our athletic director who is taking a teaching position close to his home. And so the agreement for that position is that he won't vacate his current position until we have a replacement. So that his, the posting for the athletic director position was, went out this last Friday. And we are waiting for applications and then we'll review those as soon as we get them to be able to fill that position as soon as possible. We currently have six open bus driver positions through first student. This is considerably more than two weeks ago when we last had an update. We had a driver, just to kind of give you an understanding of this last week, when a driver resigned at eleven PM the night before school started. Was the latest resignation, we had a couple of the week prior, and so there have been considerable adjustments that have needed to be made to routing as a result of needing to compact bus routes. In order to be able to have a stop on, have enough buses to go out and cover every stop because of the lack of drivers. We've also received assistance from substitute drivers from Tenino, who is also a first student bus company. So they are looking for bus drivers. They do have some in the training process, but it takes a while to get through that whole certification and training. Food service has currently two open positions that they are working to fill. We have one district health room assistant position. And a contact tracing position, and that is funded by a grant we received from the Department of Health. So we're super excited to have that funding to be able to, to offer this position, the tricky thing will be to fill it. As there are many contact tracer positions open in our county right now. And then we have a custodial position open, but we have had an open position for a year. Now, we haven't had the same open position for a year, we'll find someone, put them into the position and then have somebody retire, or have somebody move to someplace else, and so we then, you know, that person that just opens up another position, so we've just kind of had this off and on again need for custodian, so again, if you have anybody you know that is interested in being custodian, we have that position open and we have an educational assistant in our special education department position open as well. Questions about any of those?
Kim, this is Grant, specifically about any one of those, but and it's probably too early at this point, but do, are we starting to get a sense for potential impacts of the the governor's mandate, state mandate for vaccination and impacts on you know, as a whole, I guess, but are there specific jobs, looking at bus drivers that maybe hit harder, or is that, do we know?
I can give you a preliminary report. For food service and bus, our bus drivers, those are all processed through their employer, meaning first students, the DEXO.
Right.
So they aren't yet sure how many people that, you know, how many additional positions that will open up as a result of people not wanting to comply or not receiving an exemption. But they're kind of in the same places we are, I think everybody is who is in this mandated position. And that is just kind of assessing the current landscape. But I have some information, it may be the next slide about our district. I'll go to this one. So this is the vaccination status report for our school district. We currently have two hundred and eighty-one Rochester School District employees. A hundred and eighty-one of them have already provided verification of being fully vaccinated. So we have a hundred employees that we don't have vaccination verification of, forty-seven of them have requested exemption paperwork. Of that forty-seven, seventeen have actually completed their paperwork and turned it in. And we're in that process of reviewing those exemptions, they have thus far, all seventeen were religious exemptions. And so right now, we have eighty-three staff members, we do not know their status, we don't know how many of them are employees who are in the process of completing the vaccination cycle. And how many of them are, you know, among those additional thirty people who request an exemption form but haven't yet turned one in? And then we just don't know, so right now, I, just this evening, communicated out with all of our labor leadership. Asking about the process that, you know, I guess consulting with them about the process will use in terms of timelines for which we'll need to know if somebody is actually intends to be fully vaccinated and tends to turn in that exemption paperwork, or it tends to do neither of those. So we don't yet have an, you know, we don't know what the impact will be, but we're getting closer with this information. And we're just, what, a weekend of having our employees all back on campus, so many of them have just been very fixated on getting prepared for the start of the school year and, you know, you hear October eighteenth and that sounds like a long ways away. I'll get, I'll get that paperwork in later, so we'll be circling in and talking with each of those remaining eighty-three people to figure out their status soon. Questions about that? All right, and public health updates each Wednesday, I spend time with our public health officer. And so some of this information is from Thurston County, but the first is acknowledgement, the Department of Health and OSPI are scheduled to release additional guidance for schools within the next week, should say week, not weeks. And it's, it's likely that will happen this week. What I've been told is that the majority of the update is around testing programs. Options that school districts will have that will increase the chances of kids missing less school because of testing protocols. So I haven't seen any of those, I just keep hearing that it's about testing. I suspect there could be other guidance updates as well. I'll modify the board as soon as those new guidelines come out. In terms of Thurston County information, we had four hundred and ninety-five cases per hundred thousand over the last two weeks in Thurston County. And just for comparison sake, that the all-time high during the pandemic has been four hundred, five hundred and four. And that was August, the time period August eighth through twenty-fourth. So we're just under that. However, we are at the highest test positivity rate since the start of the pandemic at twelve point six percent in our county. As of yesterday, the ICU capacity was at ninety percent. And regular acute beds were at a hundred percent in Thurston County. And our local hospitals are experiencing staffing shortages like what we're hearing across the state and nation. And they're anticipating an increase to our case count as a result of Labor Day, so there'll be this, you know, a gap, and then they'll start seeing additional illness is what they're projecting.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And so we are doing a lot of contingency planning in our school district. And one is for staffing coverage. We have been doing this primarily from the standpoint of if we have staff members who become ill and can't come in, how are we going to cover those classes? If students are able to be on campus. We want to make sure that they have a teacher in front of them, so we have this laundry list of who we're going to call on to help cover in case of staffing shortages. We always, of course, start with our substitute service. And if they run out of substitutes and can't send us anyone, then we have this list of other people within our system that is, you know, we have teachers in our system who don't have their own classroom. That we can pull on emergency basis, day or two, to cover a classroom. And all the way, you know, to district office administrators, we have classified employees who have emergency substitute certificates that we can utilize if we need to, so we just have this list of various people. Also, at the secondary level, we can have teachers teach on their planning time to cover classes. And then we just compensate those teachers for that extra time in accordance to their contact language. So we're working on this, we will, of course, really be working on staffing coverage plans once we have a better understanding, if we could be short how many employees come October eighteenth. Next is just some bulleted items regarding support for quarantine students. So assignments across our district are being posted in Google Classroom. So there's a way for students who have internet access who are home on quarantine to access the, the assignments that they would be missing in class. And we will have a staff member communicate with each student or family regarding their unique support needs and then checking in with them on an ongoing basis during their quarantine period. So some of our initial questioning will be just inquiring as to whether the student will be able to complete any work during their quarantine period, some students are quarantined and perfectly healthy, asymptomatic, while others may be very ill. And so we need to be sensitive to not, you know, being on them, like, here's your work, when can we get some work back that's completed? We won't be doing that with our students who are ill. But we have, will have students who are being quarantined and are very much wanting to stay up with their studies and physically able to do so. So we'll be checking on their illness status, we'll be checking on the internet status in the home, making sure that the student has a Chromebook, if not delivering a Chromebook to them or making arrangements for somebody to pick one up on their behalf. Same thing with other supplies needed, textbooks, et cetera. And so we'll be doing that initial check-in and then doing periodic check-in, how's it going, what questions do you have about your assignments? How can we support you during this time? And we'll work with families who don't have internet access, as we do have some limited hotspots that would be available for those families. If they're in a geographic area that allows them to use a hotspot, we do have some areas of our community that regardless of what device they have, they just geographically have an obstruction to being able to, to get internet service. And then we will, of course, give extra time to students to complete work during that was supposed to have been done during the quarantine period, so we have those policies in place already for when students are absent. The extra time that they're given to make up those assignments. And we will customize those if necessary, depending on the severity of a student's illness. Next is remote instructional planning, so this is the thing that we, none of us really want to face, but I don't think it would be wise if we don't have a plan. So in the event that we have a school closure or district closure. What we know is we'll be utilizing Zoom and Google Classroom. And we are teaching our students now, while we have them at school, how to use those systems. So you think about all this batch of new kindergartners and all the other new students in our system. We are helping them to learn systems now, in the event that we may have to use them at some point during the school year. I had mentioned before that we have limited hotspots that we'd make available that families who need them. And we are in the development process of schedules, of what schedules could look like if we had to revert to a remote instructional model. For more than a day or two, so there is, you know, we have to develop a plan for, we need the school to close down for a day or two, very different than we need a, a school or a classroom to close down for a quarantine period of at least ten days or an indefinite period of time, so we are working through those different schedules. There are some details, however, that we still need, miss, we have some missing information that we need from OSPI, for example. Before we can finalize a draft schedule, and then, of course, we're going to want our staff to look at that draft schedule and give us some input about anything that could be problematic about that schedule. So I'd love to say those schedules are ready to go, they're not because of those reasons I mentioned, but they are definitely being worked on. So that we can have plans in place, and they will, our plans will look different if it's a short-term expected closure versus a long-term expected closure. I'm going to keep going and then I'm going to stop after this slide and see if you have some more questions, so in terms of closures, I suspect that many people want to know who determines if a classroom or school is closed due to COVID. So there's a couple different layers here, so the governor, as we found out before, can close school districts through an emergency declaration or order. I'll shall, I'll stay home. And so that's one thing that have, what could happen, the most likely situation would be our local county health officer has the, the ability to close our, a school, a classroom or the district due to a localized outbreak, and that can be localized to the county. To a district, to a school, to a classroom. And in the past, the previous guidance that we had in place last school year said that if ten percent of your classrooms were quarantined because of an outbreak in those classrooms, then the health officer must close the school. Now, the guidance says the health officer will consider closing the school. So there's some discretion that health officers now have in that area, so they're also going to be looking at this, the how fast the cases are increasing within that area and other factors that could come to play such as hospitalization capacity, variety of other things like that. School district superintendents can close the school in the event that we don't have enough staff to safely operate. So that's where it goes down to the local level. Anything, any closures due to actual outbreak that comes from a county or state level superintendent, local level is really like, we don't have enough staff to be able to have school. Which happened in some neighboring districts this last spring, right at the very end. And then, when would a classroom be closed? So a health officer will consider closing a classroom if two or more COVID nineteen cases among students or staff occur within a fourteen-day period of time, which are linked. And which means that those people don't share a household, so if we had twins in a classroom those would not be considered an outbreak, because it would be likely that that transmission occurred at home just as likely as it happened at school. And that these folks do not have outside contact of any significant nature, so it, in this situation, that's the Of any significant nature. So it, in this situation, that's the. When a health officer would determine if they're going to close a classroom. And then again, if we have a school that has ten percent or more classrooms. Closed because of outbreaks in those classrooms is when they're going to consider closing the whole school. So that was a lot of information. So I'm going to take a breath and give you an opportunity to ask me questions if you have them.
You know, the question, remember, we're going to comment that, because I'm pleased to see the consider. Were used there because two seems like a low number. For, you know, for, for a classroom, two out of twenty-five or thirty. Not that that should be ignored by any stretch, but. I, I think, so I'm glad you're using the word consider so they can kind of take in the context of what's going on in county and. And it made gave some opportunity to see if that's increasing. We could spend some time communicating with families about what's going on so they can make choices, inform choices, but. Hopefully we keep things going. As long as it doesn't escalate.
Neil or Wana, either of you have a question?
No, no, like Grant said, it's more of a comment. I'm just glad to see that. There's a Plan B in the event that the schools do have to close. That you guys are teaching even kindergartners to how to access a Zoom. So they can have access to it. So that's, that's very good.
We hope we don't have to use those plans.
Right.
Yeah.
My only comment is, uh, I'm glad to see our community went up one percent on vaccination rate. We're now at what thirty-nine percent, I believe. For our zip code. So that's a plus. There are some people that are still transitioning to full vaccination. At this point in time, we don't have any current outbreaks, right, Kim?
Within our schools, no, not at this time.
Beautiful.
Day two.
I hopefully it continues on and stays good and steady and anybody that's not feeling well stays home before they get on the bus. You know, I. I look forward to continuing to follow this stuff closely and want to keep the kiddos healthy and, you know, they're. You know, the ones under twelve, they can't get vaccinated yet, you know, to mitigate some of the symptoms. Of the outbreak and. You know, hopefully the numbers will continue to decline. We'll have to see how things go. Thank you.
You're welcome. I believe I have another slide here and that's just a reminder that staff and students are identified as close contacts. And do not need to quarantine if they're fully vaccinated and asymptomatic. So again, this would be students only twelve and older. Because those are the only ones who qualify for vaccination at this point. And this, you know, if they close the classroom, everybody goes home. But this is, we don't, you know, if it's a situation where we don't need to close a classroom, close a school, there's just. Somebody who comes down with COVID and then we identify who their close contacts are. If a student or staff members considered a close contact but are fully vaccinated and don't show any symptoms. Then they can stay at work or school. They are encouraged between days three and five to be tested. And so we have that testing available now in our schools. And again, parent permission required for testing. I believe that that was my last slide. Any other questions?
Thanks, Kim.
You're welcome.
All right, our next item is the naming of the Rochester High School walking trail. Is Lily with us today or?
Uh, yes, I am here. Sorry. Yes.
Hey.
Um, so update on the trail, on the trail itself is completed. The only thing left to do is name it and then make the signs. Um, I've gone through several different name ideas and the one that I am proposing tonight is the Promised Carper Trail. Um, Promise Carper's family owned many of the strawberry fields around Rochester. Um, I think that really ties back to our heritage as the Rochester berry pickers. Um, and then in addition, Promise was the first child born in the Rochester area.
That's great.
And the trail is on Carper Road.
Yes, I mean, it's on Carper Road.
Sure, I, I noticed the trail the other day, dropping my son off at school. Nice work. It had to be a, how long did it take you?
Um, about three hundred hours of like people working on it. I think it was spread out over how many weeks? About two months of time. I was gone for several, there were weeks during the months, but I think there's about three hour, hundred man hours spent on it.
Wow, that's impressive. Thank you so much.
So we would need a motion from the board if you would like to accept Lily's suggested name as the Promise Carper. Trail.
Warner or Neil, would you like to make the motion to, to rename the Rochester High School Walking Trail to Promise Carper Walking Trail?
I'll move forward.
Thank you. Are you a second?
This is Neil. I will second that motion.
Oh, great. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations, Lily. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Great work. Okay, our next item is the school board meeting schedule.
So there is a training coming up on September twenty-ninth. Of this month at five thirty PM. It will be via Zoom. Um, but because it, it will most likely have a quorum of board members, we need to announce this as an official board meeting. Um, there will be no board action taken, but there will be training that will occur. We will be with. Um, school board members from across the state, other districts who are part of the professional learning communities at work project. And so this, if you were to make this a motion and approve it. It will adjust our board calendar to show the September twenty-ninth training.
Thank you. Make a motion to approve the board schedule to add the September twenty-ninth board training. Are you a second?
All second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Schedule is updated. Thank you.
Kim, really quick, you said at five thirty?
Yes, five thirty. And I'll send out a link.
Okay, perfect.
I guess closer.
All right, so moving to new business, our next item, we have our guest with us.
I believe so.
Oh, great. So our next item is redistricting and we have Bob Schweitzer with Samanis Data Systems. Here to talk to us about the twenty twenty census redistricting program and. How that could impact our, our regionalization and districting.
Hi, guys. So. You've guys have gone over my, my proposal, I, I assume, right? And seen that some of the population needed to change. With. With the growth that has happened in your, in your school district. So I tried to make sure that I did a. You know, minimal impact type redistricting plan. A few of your director districts needed to grow and a few of them needed to shrink. In your. In my review. Um, you had a few director districts that were, were off by, you know, four, five, almost six percent. Whereas your fourth district didn't really need to change too much. It was only off by about fifteen people. So on the proposal. I created a, a new set of districts. Ended up with, you know, margins of. A low of twenty-eight and a high of twenty-five. For your director districts, all very easily under one percent population margin. Your, your first district needed to grow by a bit. So I, I grew that using the natural boundaries that you guys had before. Onto some of the, the, the regular lines that you had previously.
And Bob, if you want to show anything, we can have you project as well. So we have that option if that would be helpful.
I'm trying to. Oh, that's what I've got. I'm. I brought up the twenty twenty, twenty-ten map over here. I was trying to figure out why is it looking a little, little high and outside in baseball terms? Let me close that.
It would be great if you're able to share.
Yeah, let me, let me load up the. Um, on my end here real quick, the. Twenty twenty map.
While he's doing that, I can just share a couple of comments that every ten years following the census. Um, every school district needs to reestablish. Proportionality between its director districts, meaning. Do we have relatively, you know, twenty percent of the population in each one of the five districts? And so because population, you know. You know, is grows in certain areas of the district faster than others. It means that we need to adjust boundary lines for those director districts. And so. Bob and his company work to assist school districts and to do that redistricting in a way that makes sense. Often against, you know, what fits with the geography. You know, that, that is helpful. Other, you know, other things are. Other factors are taken into account to like where our board members reside and keeping people in there. You know, still residing within the correct district, et cetera.
Yeah, I've, I've been personally involved in doing this for thirty years now, so. Nothing surprises me anymore when it comes to redistricting. Um, are you guys able to see my, my screen over here?
Yes.
Yes.
Awesome. Let's get my mouse over here. So the first district previously was. Um, where is it? So previously you were a little, a little bit off. You know, here's your, your various percentages, the fourth district. I don't believe I even changed that at all. Um, at fifteen people, that's, that's really not bad at all. A first district needed to grow and so ended up growing it into this area. Your existing line being the river here out to, I believe this is a railroad track. Um, I didn't change that, but this area here, I have now assigned that to the first. Which then goes along with the line that it was already using in the past. And then along down here, which was some of the similar lines before, but. I believe I did some minor changes in this area here, up and over and then back to the freeway. Very minimal changes. Mostly it's just ends up streamlining in this area here. Getting you to a nice population of. You know, eight people high. Uh, that should be as close as practical. Which is what the state laws suggest. Your second district, I did end up needing to grow a little bit. The line of the river down here, I left that untouched as well. So this is the. Your existing districts. So here's where I took away from the, and gave to the first. And I also gave to the first from the fifth there. But I left the river in this part, but we diverged from the river there. So now it follows this road down here. Um, and I believe this is a school property in here as well. So it's a nice convenient boundary line as well. Not the most compact of districts with the zigzaggy lines, but. There isn't many options when it comes to some of these census blocks. They go where they go. Wherever the geography lays, that shouldn't be a problem. The, um, so the, the second and third districts fell here. The fifth, the fourth district, I just. I, it looks like I kept that line exactly the same. And then the fifth district did end up having some impact into it up here and then down here to adjust the numbers. But we ended up with. That one being your lowest district at twenty, negative twenty-eight people. That's, that's a very nice, simple arguable number. Very much below one percent. There are some school districts where the population is so small. Um, I argue that getting it below five percent is a good, a good day. You guys are definitely getting into that range where, you know, one percent is an easy goal. Getting it below one percent is a much harder goal. I believe I kept every one of the incumbents in their district. That's part of the law that I follow. The law is broken out into, into five pieces. Number one is make the districts as. Equal in population is practical. Uh, and I believe that that goal has been met with these numbers here. Number two, your districts need to be contiguous. There are no islands. You do happen to cross a river and so a river, river separates the second district, but that's. It's still contiguous in geographical area. Third criterion is compactness. The second district is a nice relatively square, you know, air quotes. District, your fourth district is, is. You know, squared off over there. Your first district has a little bit of wandering to it. Uh, so it's a little bit less compact, along with your third district has these little jags. But nothing crazy, nothing, nothing out there that I haven't seen before. Few would argue that this would, would fail for compactness. Number four is. No district should either favor nor disfavor a political party or a racial group. You don't really have any minority population in your districts that. We could really build a director district that would be a, a minority district. The other take on that particular law is each board member is a political party unto themselves. So not throwing a board member out of their district is not disfavoring that board member. So that's the, the way I take that is keep them in their districts and everyone gets along just fine. Lastly, the is, you know, represent areas of common interest. That's where I take a nice light hand to any changes that I do is the same area is the same. Basic area as previously, minimal changes. So that you're still pulling representatives from the same, the same neighborhood area. Um, not going in and rewriting your school director districts. Keep it, keep it similar, not stir the pot. Those are the criterion that by which I, I created these maps. Questions?
What is the timeline, Bob, for the rest of the approval process?
To, to approve this. The, the board needs to come to a decision whether they want to move forward with this or if they want to see changes. When it comes to changes, I would need to know what are those changes that would need to be addressed. Once I get a go ahead to, to. Once I get a go ahead to, to move forward with a, with a plan that I've provided. I need notification so that I can create the legal meets and bounds description. Also create interchange files for the county GIS department for importation at their end. With that legal description, the maps that I've provided and the interchange file. The board can then go ahead and with notice of a week at least. Have a board meeting where there is. Redistricting on the meeting with public comment, the public can then comment. Once the public has finished with their comments, the board can. Move to. Uh, accept the, the new redistricting plan and ratify it with a resolution. That resolution, along with my files that I've provided. Can be then provided to the ESD and to the county auditor. You're all in one county, right? You're in two counties?
Three.
You're in three county, okay. Well then, you're just sending out the files in tripwicked and we potentially get. Three times the question from the auditor, but. School districts are, are very simple for the auditor. They don't have to worry about precinct boundaries. They don't have to worry about. Electorate zones for each of the, the incumbents. Every board member is elected by the entire school district, not by their, the people within their director district. So that takes out any other problems with the county to implementing these new. These new director districts.
And Bob, when does that have to statutorily be through the county?
It is my understanding that you guys have an election, well, a representative. Position open for, um, twenty twenty-two, correct?
Correct.
Okay, because of the weirdness with this particular year, the state created a. Well, they were going to make changes to the redistricting law anyway. Uh, so while they were in there making the new deadline, November fifteenth. They put in there an exemption for, uh, twenty twenty-one because. With the data being published in August, making the end date November fifteenth, uh, is a little prohibitive. For, uh, quite a number of, uh, locales. So for those with an election in twenty twenty-two, they need to have their work finished. And submitted to the auditor. No later than December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. For all the other school districts, um, and other general purpose districts like your ESDs. The, the end date for that is November of twenty twenty-two, a very generous year plus. So you guys are well on your way. You have a plan. You guys can, you know. Suggest alterations or you can move forward with this plan. I can get you a legal description for a plan in a matter of days, literally. And then you can give your notices to, to paper and on your websites. Have a meeting, a regular board meeting with this as a topic for it. And, you know, that's a one week notice period, ma- uh, minimum. Yeah, you guys are well ahead. There shouldn't be any need to. Have special board meetings for just this.
Thank you so much for your assistance. Uh, I suspect board members may have questions, but. It's very helpful to get those timeframes and to know that we can, you know, wait till the. And off into October before we actually need to take action, you know?
Yeah, yeah, I wouldn't want to, I would want you guys to at least make sure that you're approving a plan by November. Any pla- uh, questions from the board?
Uh, this is Neil. I would just like to say thank you, Bob. Um, this is very knowledgeable and I'm learning. And that's the best part of being a school board director is about learning. And, uh, well, the census just taking place, this is wonderful knowledge to have and thank you so much for your time and effort. Thank you.
I'm kind of a geek when it comes to these things. I really love redistricting. The, how to figure out where to get the people to draw the lines to make this work. It's, it's a passion of mine. I'm, I kind of nerd out on these things. I prefer to stay out of politics, so. I'm glad that you guys don't appear to be having any politics.
You just keep proving how smart you are.
Overall, um, does anyone have any questions specific on where some of these lines are? I believe I did provide insets and some of the deep to detail where some of the changes are occurring. In the, the PDF file.
You did, yeah.
So I can go into more detail on some of these. The, some of the border along between the second and third district where. It diverges from the road and then connects to the river. Um, there's some. Property line for a school is what I saw on, on the maps. So. That's going to be a creative way to, to describe it. It's not just following a, a river, a road or, um. Or, or other natural line on the ground. But that shouldn't be, there aren't any homes in and around this, this particular line down here. So that's, that's good. It, we only worry about making sure we can find. Uh, future board members and make sure that they can, they're within the residency of the district that they're wanting to run for.
Makes sense.
I really made it easy on whoever's in number four. No changes.
Thank you.
But if you want to, I can try to work you out of your office. I, it's not too late for me to, to gerrymander.
Bob, thank you very much for your time. We do have two board members who were, weren't able to be here tonight. But, uh, I, I think the changes you've made, as you described, are, are pretty minimal. Have, uh, little impact on, on board members themselves and, and. Uh, get our districts to, uh, you know, almost identical, you know, under a percent difference.
Yeah.
It's a good work, so it puts us in a good position to move this forward.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, um, just let the superintendent know and, uh, get me an email and I will produce the, the next steps and. Certainly if any of your three county auditors have any questions, send them to Bob. Bob will get them off your back. All right, guys.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you too. All right. Good, we'll move that forward. So it's good we have some time, um, to make, make sure Michael John have a chance to, to look through this and, and, uh. We can have some other discussion for, before October.
Absolutely, and they can always watch this because it's recorded to, to get it straight from Bob. Cause he does such a nice job explaining all of that.
All right, our next item is summer school recap. Maggie's gonna give us an update?
Yes, I am. Um, okay, so. Just, they, I'll look at you, Justin, okay? So just a quick, uh, first of all, you can see my screen, right? It's, it shows something, just a quick recap of what we did for summer opportunity. This was, uh, you know, a summer school type of options that we offered. Uh, mid-June to mid-July for four weeks for our K through eight and then five weeks for our high school students. Um, yeah, as, as I had mentioned last time, we talked about summer school, you know, we devised that into three different types of. Of camps, we used a camp theme, a lit camp and invention camp and then an arts and craft camp. That all students, uh, K eight got to participate in. So just kind of looking at a recap of that, we were, uh, we grouped this by grade bands and so, uh, kindergarten first, we had thirty-four. Thirty-seven, you can just see that there with a total of a hundred and fifty-two kids, K through eight. Uh, we did focus on social, emotional, uh, as well as some academics. And you'll see there, yeah, we've got some pictures of some. Some of our students with some of their, their, their camp realia a- as far as, uh. Uh, you know, working on their social emotional piece. I, I chose a picture with the canteen there with the girl holding the canteen. Cause I don't know if you'll recall, it was one of those super hot days. Uh, that we had a hundred plus degree days that we had a summer camp. And so that's the day we handed out the canteens and the kids just let, I mean, they, they brought it back and forth because it's like, this is what we do with camp. So it was super fun and kind of, um, it, it tied in together with, with the heat. Uh, this is an example of some of our arts and crafts. This was, was one of the big projects that we did K through eight. And that's this paper mache bowl with clay art that they created. So these are just the different stages of. The kids stripping the paper with the, for the paper mache, this is their, once the bowl was created, they're painting it and then you can see the clay. Fruit that they created with that and then, um, Ms. Morgan, the teacher in this class, added some other little treats into their bowl as well. For that, so that's an example of the arts and activities. These are some of the experiments and things that we did in the STEM pieces of that. This is at the high school with our incoming eighth, ninth graders. You're working on towers, brush bots, different things like that and different STEM types of activities that they did. Along with the reading that we did with Lit Camp. And then we had, uh, high school, our summer opportunity for our high school. There were forty-seven students that attended that were primarily for credit retrieval. So, uh, those forty-seven students retrieved a hundred nine half credits. So we averaged, uh, about three half credits per student. Which means essentially, uh, half of a, half of a, uh, a course load of a first semester. So, so three semester classes is what, what they, uh, the average student retrieved. One of the things that I think we were particularly happy about is that typically, um, credit retrieval happens online. And happens through Apex, but we were able to provide lots of different in-person, um, opportunities for them, so. Uh, most of our kids participated in two out of three of their periods were with live teachers in person instruction, so that. Included a humanities class, which students received an ELA and, and, uh, a social studies credit depending on what they needed. Uh, we had science in person and then we had ceramics lab, so I pulled a couple of. Pictures from Mrs. Fagan's ceramics lab as well, that, that kids had that opportunity, so it wasn't just a full. Full-on just academic, you know, you know, core content experiences that, that if kids chose, they could do a period of ceramics to. To, to get an elective or just to take a break. So a really short one, I just wanted, like I said, just to, uh, to give you an update as far as how summer opportunity went and. And it was, it was a fast four to five weeks, but it was, it was a lot of fun. So if you have any questions.
Thank you, Maggie. Sounds like a, a busy and, and a productive summer. Any questions for Maggie?
Yeah.
This is Neil. I'd just like to say thank you. Opportunity for kids to get some credit, some hands-on training and learning and working in arts, lovely thing. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
She had amazing group of staff members, um, who helped support that. So I don't want to diminish her, her role in getting this organized, but she had. Just, we couldn't have been more pleased with the staff who, um, gave up time in their summer to help in this way.
Absolutely.
Fantastic, thank you. Okay, our next item, uh, succeed, a contract with ESD, uh, nursing. It's like sixty-one hours a week.
Yes, so this represents, um, this is a renewal agreement, however, it does represent an increase in the amount of time. We will have nursing services in our district. So this year, we happen to have seven. Seven diabetic students at our high school. Of the eight diabetic students we have in our district. And so, um, we added another day of nursing service to our high school. So they have two days a week of nursing service. The other three, three days a week, they have access to a nurse. Um, who will, who's stationed either at the primary school or elementary, so can get there quickly. If needed, but they have two days of onsite service, so this does, um, represent an increase to service.
Was there an increase in rate or just an increase in total service?
I honestly do not know the answer to that. Give me one second unless either Jill or Shawna happens to know off the top of their heads.
There's not a, a rate increase, but we pay by the hours, so we'll end up paying more because we have more hours.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Jill.
Neil, want any question, questions?
No.
Uh, this is Neil. I figured I might as well ask, does this have a. Thing to do with the contact tracing as far as stuff with the COVID concerns, or is this just an annual contract renewal?
This is an annual contract renewal. All those, these nurses do provide contact tracing for our school district. So that's part of the function that they currently play. Is taking on those additional responsibilities due to COVID. These are our general school nurses as well.
Awesome, thank you.
All right, if there's no further questions, I will move to approve the contract ESD one thirteen nursing for twenty-one, twenty-two school year. If you're a second?
I'll second.
Great, uh, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Contract approved. Right, next item is the Wasdah Fall Regional Meeting.
Yes, so this is just informational, um, twice a year there. Um, Wasdah Regional Meetings, once in the fall and once in the spring. The fall date for our region has been chosen, it's October fourth. Um, Shelton will be the hosting school district and the event is from six to eight thirty. Right now it is scheduled to be. In person. And if you are interested in attending, uh, please reach out to Shawna who will enroll you. There is a, a slight charge for the evening meal.
And, uh, how, how soon does Shawna need to? To know?
And I believe they'll cut off the meal registration the week prior. And of course, they like as much time as they can get, but, um, it tends not to be refundable, so. We would ask that you would have a pretty good idea about whether you can follow through with attending before you reach out to Shawna.
Perfect, thank you. Shawna, would you mind, uh, you know, sending us a reminder? Poke to say hey.
I will.
Yeah, thank you. All right, our next item is the Board Workday, Saturday, October second.
So this is a reminder more than anything else that we have a Board Workday. Um, that we do annually, so it was on a Saturday. This year it's October second. Um, we have, in the past have run from eight AM to two PM. And so we'll make sure lunches provided, um, on that day. And, and so this is to, to remind you, get that on your calendars. And to, um, remind, also invite you to reach out to either Grant or I. With, um, items you'd like to see on the agenda. And we will also send out a reminder when we're getting close to being able to cut off the agenda. To say, okay, here's the last opportunity to, um, choose content for that day. Strategic planning, budget review is always a, a portion of that day, and then it's what we add to it. Any questions about Board Workday?
Yeah, what, uh, what is the time of that?
And we, in the past, we've done eight AM to two PM on that Saturday.
Okay.
And more likely that'll be at the district, correct?
Correct.
Shawna, can I ask you again to maybe to send out, uh, a note to have everybody check their calendars, make sure they, they have that time available?
I will. I'm gonna send the invite tonight to your Google Calendar so you can, um, possibly see a conflict and reach out to Kim.
Perfect, thank you. That's, you know, October second is, it's already almost mid-September, so it's right around the corner. All right. I, I think that uh, ends the scheduled agenda, our next, last item, our last scheduled item is uh, public input. Another opportunity for public input for items that may not have been on the agenda. So if anybody has any public input, please uh, enter your name, email address in the chat. Justin will be monitoring that and uh, we'll be able to call on you. We'll give it about a minute.
Just again, another reminder as we wait that um, the recording of these board meetings is put up on. There's access on our website to the recorded meeting, so if anybody came in late and want to see what they missed, they can access that or. Rewatch some component of it. So that is always there.
Thanks, Kim, thank you.
Granted, I have nobody.
Nobody, okay. Well, thank you all for attending. Look forward to seeing it in a couple, two weeks. Well, they've got a calendar, so I can't tell you what day that is, but.
The twenty-second.
Thank you very much. Uh, all right, have a great evening. Uh, we will adjourn.